20, public and non-public sessions.
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from 8:31, 20, public and non-public, with corrections if need be.
Thank you, Mark.
Second.
The second by Peter, motion made by Mark, seconded by Peter to accept the minutes as presented. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I'll call a roll. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Chet?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes 5-0-0. I don't have any announcements in my packet, nor that I have personally. Is anybody on the board who has announcements they'd like to share with everyone at this time? None? Okay, first public comments at 6:10, we're a little early for that, so Derek, we can get right into your administrator's report, if you will, please.
Thank you. If you go to tab 7A, you'll see your committee meeting schedule for the next two weeks. I will note, on Wednesday at 6:00 PM, the library trustees are meeting in person at the first floor. That's an early start time.
I'll be there.
Thank you. Next week, on Wednesday at 6:30 PM, HGC will be meeting at Grassmere.
Yep, got that.
And it's 7:00 PM, Conservation Commission will be meeting in their remote fashion, as they have been.
Yes, I have that covered.
And then on Thursday at 7:00 PM, Planning Board will be meeting.
I'll be covering that.
Thank you. The next page, you have the consent agenda for this week. You have employee status reports. You have a police officer's successful completion of one-year probationary period. You have a police officer resignation and a dispatcher new hired. There's a sympathy card in the board's office. You have rights to enter for Westlon Expansion Cemetery, section W1, lot 62. You have a notice of property lien discharge, map 17, lot 34, and map 21, lot 60. You have the agreement for the sports field fencing project with the town in blue ribbon, and that needs a signature of chair or designee. And then you have the election of the New Hampshire Assessing Association officials, 2021 election of officers. That needs a vote and a signature of the chairman. Our assessor, Scott Bartlett, is on that ballot, and typically, we have submitted a vote for him on his behalf, or on the board's behalf in the past.
Yeah, and I signed that today.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that, Peter. And a second by, who was it? Chet? I'm sorry?
Chet.
Chet, thank you, Chet. Motion made by Peter and was seconded by Chet to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call a roll. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chet?
Yes.
And motion passes 5-0-0.
And then the last item, which is pretty quick, you have recommendations from the assessor. The assessor recommends the following: a land use change tax for map 9, lot 93.
I'll make a motion to approve the assessor's recommendations as presented.
Second, I had a motion by Chet and a second by Peter. Is there any discussion on that motion? And I'll call a roll. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
And Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chet?
Yes.
That motion passes 5-0-0. 7D is reappointment of health officer and appointment of deputy health officer.
Mr. Chair, do you want to do a public comment as it is, 6:10?
It is, okay, thank you. Thank you for keeping an eye on the clock, Derek. Is there anyone who can speak for public comment, Derek?
Yes, I do have one individual on the phone. If you wish to be heard for public comment, if you could press star nine on your telephone, and then introduce yourself and provide an address.
Good evening. Who do we have with us tonight? Now's your opportunity to make comment.
Do you wish to speak during public comment?
No, I don't. David, even from Conservation.
Oh, hi, David.
Hey, David. David, did you want some?
No, he didn't. He said he did not have any comment for public comment.
Okay. Anyone else who'd like to comment? Now's your opportunity. See anyone else, Derek?
No, there's no one else on the line.
Okay, then we'll move along. It's a little early for our 6:15 appointment, so Derek, if you want to pick up on the, on your, where were we?
We're at tab 7D.
Yep, reappointment. Yep, thank you.
We have a reappointment of the town health officer and an appointment of the deputy health officer. The town's health officer, three-year term expires tomorrow, and this would be a reappointment for three years for our building inspector, health officer, Mark Tessier, and also asking for a motion to appoint the fire chief as the deputy health officer.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board members on this item? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to appoint the fire chief, Brian Allen, as the deputy health officer.
And what about the reappointment of?
We'll do it one at a time, because that's the way it's written.
Okay, so you're taking the second one first. Okay, so your motion is relative to the deputy health officer.
Right.
Okay, who seconded it? Peter's motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kelly. Seconded by Kelly. Any discussion? This is for the deputy health officer. Seeing none, I'll call a roll. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chet?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0-0.
I'll make a motion, we appoint, reappoint building inspector, health officer, Mark Tessier, as the health officer for the town of Gofftown.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion made by Mark and seconded by Chet. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chet?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes 5-0-0. Now, on 7E, we have a nomination for reappointing the Piscataqua River Local Advisory Committee. That's at tab 7E.
Yes, thank you. This is, once again, this is for a nomination to the Department of Environmental Sciences, and this would be a reappointment of resident Alan Garfield, who currently serves on the Piscataqua River Local Advisory Committee.
Thank you, everyone.
Make a motion to nominate Alan Garfield for reappointment to the Piscataqua River Local Advisory Committee.
Thank you, Peter.
Second.
Second by Mark. Motion is made by Peter with a second by Mark. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chet?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0-0.
And I think we might have time for one more. You've got the vote for the land acquisition purchase of map 8, lot 13B. The two public hearings that are required under state law are held on August 24th and August 31st. The Conservation Commission has recommended the board purchase the land and use Conservation Land Use Change Tax Fund to fund the purchase.
Thank you for the background on that. So you see a proposed motion. Someone like to make the motion?
I'll make the motion to purchase map 8, lot 13B, located off of Stinson Road, totaling 34.5 acres of conserved land bordering Page Hill Marsh. A designated prime wetland for the purchase price of $50,000, with the amount not to exceed $58,000 from the Goffstown Land Use Change Tax Conservation Fund, with a purchase fee and associated expenses as previously authorized by the Conservation Commission, and to authorize the town administrator to sign all related closing documents.
I'll second.
Thank you for the motion, Peter, and thank you for the second, Kelly. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chet?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes 5-0-0. Okay, are we at 6:15?
Yes, we are.
We are. All right. All right, can we?
We're at tab number five.
Tab number five, thank you, Derek.
And we have, we have on the computer, we have town clerk Cathy Ball, the moderator, Rodney Stark, and District Five Assistant Moderator Lionel Coulom.
Great, good evening, folks. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Who wants to present this for us?
I'll start. I'd start, moderator.
Okay, go ahead. Rodney, floor is yours.
Kathy put together a memorandum, which I believe is part of your packet tonight.
Yes, it is.
It outlines in very good detail the reasons that we're before you tonight. What we'd like to do, in short, is move the Bartlett District Five polling place for the November 3rd election to the Mountain View Middle School. The long and short of it is, Bartlett is, and really has been for quite some time, but we're just talking about November now, but it is, it does not provide sufficient space to conduct a major election, which this will be. Four years ago, the town of Gofftown had 9,980 voters. So we can expect to have something like that this year as well. The, the parking is almost impossible, and we find that, unfortunately, a lot of the spaces are taken up by poll workers. The, the interior space is, is insufficient in a number of respects. Even without considering social distancing, it's insufficient. But with social distancing, it's impossible. The, we have, we have very, we're probably not going to be able to get enough voting booths in to satisfy the one voting booth per 100 voters on the checklist. And of course, as you know, the Secretary of State's office and Attorney General come and inspect us for a reelection. That's fine, but that's real tight. Probably not possible. The, any accessibility is another question. I think Kathy probably can give you more detail on that. But we have, we cannot have voters enter at one location and exit another. They cross paths at the main door. There's no true traffic route. Mountain View Middle School, the three of us went up there Friday. We had a very cordial reception by the school principal, and what we found out is that it's a highly, highly desirable location for an election. You'd almost think that it was built to hold an election. The, there's, there's 160 spaces in front of the building, which would be adequate for voters. Poll worker parking 55 spots in the back of the building. The, the, in and out, there's a, there's a, there's a means for voters to get in and out without crossing paths. It's a one-way system that'll work just fine. There's a cafeteria on the second floor, which is accessible by means of an elevator for poll workers to take a break, or, I don't know, have a snack or whatever. The supervisors of the checklist, as you know, it would be very convenient if we could have them in the same hall, which we don't, actually at either polling place currently. But with this location, Mountain View Middle School, the supervisors could be in the same hall, which is a great convenience. The, the, for people who need to visit the supervisors, as well as for the staff that are working there. Another feature of Mountain View Middle School, which, as I say, it makes you think it was built to have an election, is there's a roof-covered entrance, and there's a table there, and this would serve quite nicely as a location for the drop-off box for absentee voters, under a cover, in case you have bad weather. So voters don't have to, wouldn't have to come into the school. They can just pull up and drop off their ballots in the man, it would be a man ballot box, which it has to be. So the, the long and short of it is, I think it's a, I think it'd be an excellent time to give consideration to making this move for the November election. Now, I'm sure that Lionel, who works Bartlett, and Kathy, who works everywhere, have more insights and thoughts that they may wish to present at this time.
One of the problems is people coming in to vote. If we have inclement weather, even if we don't, it's way too tight to have social distancing, even if they would drop it down to four feet instead of six feet. You just don't have it. People would be standing outside in a bad weather, and they cross paths real close to each other, within a foot of each other, as they go in and out. So that's the other thing. At the middle school, as Rod said, it is designed for voting. They had us in mind. You go in, there's plenty of room in the hallways. Regardless of what the weather is going to be like, we can put everybody in a hallway with social distancing. Am I correct? There was plenty of room, and so once they vote, they can leave. The gym is a little bit more than twice the size that we have at Bartlett. So this would be great for that. It's just fantastic. A few other things we're asking for about the notifying the voters.
One other thing about the gym is that we asked about floor covering, and the principal let us know that there is a cover, they have a cover that covers the whole floor, which is important, obviously, to, you know, protect the floor. So that's not a problem, unlike some of our other situations.
We want to talk about the recommendation for notifying the voters.
Yes, yes, yeah.
We would also like, if you notice on your, what we submitted, we would request authorization to create a mailing, written notification of the November 3rd change to all the District Five households of registered voters. We would also have somebody there at Bartlett during the day, in case somebody doesn't get the word. Maybe they've been out of town, maybe they just got in, to give them a piece of paper with a map, a very simple one. It's very easy to get to. It doesn't have to be a genius, and to get from Bartlett to the middle school. So no one would be lost, we hope. So, any questions for us?
No, thanks for that background, Rod and Lionel. Is Kathy on? Does Kathy have anything she wanted to add?
She's here.
She is. Hi, Kathy.
Hi. I was very impressed when I went on the tour of Mountain View, and I think that, I think that the nice thing about it is when you enter the street, we'll be able to have plenty of signage. This is going to be, if this is approved, we're going to have to create a huge signage layout that people will turn to the right to go up and park in front of the school. Just the fact that you drive up and there's 160 spots out front is pretty impressive. And there's a big circular driveway that goes in, as Rod mentioned, to be able to have a drop-off box and have people draw, go through that particular loop. But we'll be able to signage the locations, so people go up in a round loop and come in at the top of the parking lot, and enter out at the bottom of the parking lot, and not have to cross paths, looping in and out with, with people coming to park and people to leave. The fact that we can send people to the left when they approach Mountain View that are poll workers and send them out back to park, and not have them have their cars parked amongst the people that are coming and going and backing in and out all day is a real plus also. The hallways are wide up there. The loop to bring poll, voters in, brings them in one direction, in one door, and out another door. The gym loops them around in a circle and back to the front door. The hallway's nice and wide, and it's only at the front door that people would, would pass each other. And there's certainly double the width up there that we have at Bartlett.
At least.
So I think that at the last election, that the planning was done, and Karen Leclerc, deputy clerk, did an excellent job laying out the poll, and she had many compliments from people that were poll workers about the fact that she did her best to try to make them feel safe and have social distancing. But regardless, these people were elbow to elbow down there. And, and one of our biggest concerns with trying to feed voters through the Bartlett poll, even if we can meet the requirement for the booth layout, is that you can only have so many tables set up to queue people going in. So if you're limited to four or five checklist lines, that slows down the speed of being able to put people through the checklist and put them into the booths. And when you have a limited number of booths, you can only feed people at a pace that will accommodate voters entering the booths and exiting the booths on, on the voting floor. So I think that I was very excited with the possibility of Karen being able to set up the gym up to Mountain View and not be limited to five tables. She could potentially spread the checklist between eight tables and more if she needed it for new voters, and that the supervisors, instead of being split between two small classrooms, would be able to be in the same hall, and that they would be able to have more space to register new voters. In one of our big previous elections that we had, supervisors of the checklist registered almost 1,400 people on election day, and three-quarters of those registrants were for the Bartlett poll. So that says that they need eight or 10 people up there sworn in as assistants supervises the checklist to be able to meet that demand to get people registered and through the voting line quickly.
Well, thank, thank, thank you, the three of you for articulating all those items very clearly for us. I think, personally, it makes a whole lot of sense to make this change. The question I have is, what are our obligations and the requirements, the process and the timeline for making this change?
Well, I think that the reason we asked Derek to put this on the agenda on, on Friday is that, knowing that you weren't going to meet for another two weeks, we wanted to get this plan in front of you to make a decision tonight, because if you choose to go forward, we'd like to assemble the in-house working committee that we've already set up to deal with the COVID issues and all, all the planning that we had to do for the September election, and get that crew together and start looking at what are all the issues that we need to face, and what planning we have to have, what we need for signage, what we need for notification. One of the first things we do would be to contact the Secretary of State and make the Secretary of State aware of the poll change, so that that notification could go up on their website in several places. And then I think we want to talk about, the committee would want to talk about what plans we would have for social media, advertisement. If you were to approve the funds for us to send out written notification to every voter or voting household in the district, that's something that we would want to get working on and put together a clear notification, so that we made people understand that we're only moving the Bartlett poll to Mountain View, that other voters would continue to go to GHS, presently vote in District One at Gofftown High School. And I think that we had a good team that worked on the prep for the September 8th election, and I think that that core group could make good recommendations about how we approach every angle that needs to be considered.
So, so it's your recommendation, we use that same team to, to set this up and lay it all out and bring the process back before us after they've done, done their research and looked at all the details and the intricacies and workings of it? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, yes. And I want to make it clear that making this move involves some cost for additional signage and notification. And Danielle and I have had a conversation looking at some of the grant opportunities that are out there and some of the money that may be available to help offset some of the costs. And we just had a brief discussion about that, but there looked like some opportunity that maybe we can recruit some of the money that we'll have to spend.
Carlos, I have a question, when you have a chance.
Yeah, yeah, okay, go ahead, Peter. Why don't you start off with questions?
Okay, well, Kathy or mentioned, I don't know if Kathy or one of them mentioned that we would be sending letters to all those folks. Are we also, when we send out the letters, are we going to be promoting absentee ballots, or letting them know that an absentee ballot? I have questions of whether a lot of these people are going to want to drive up to Mountain View from nearby. So I'm, I think it's important that if we decide to do this, which it sounds like we really have to, that we make sure that people are aware that they can get an absentee ballot instead of having to drive to Mountain View.
Yeah, I agree, Peter. I think that's an important component of this whole thing. Other questions from other board members?
That said, Carlos, I make the motion that we approve the move to move the polling place, the Mountain View Middle School, from Bartlett Elementary School.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Mark.
Mark, okay. And then to utilize the, I'll call it a standing committee, if you will, that's in place now, that's done, done some of this background work, and ready to carry the ball forward. Is that, is that your intent, Peter and Mark?
Yes, me, yes.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion from any of the board members? Seeing none, that's great. I'll take a roll call. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chet?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes 5-0-0. I will hand the ball off to you folks, Kathy, and your team, and Derek, your team.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you very much, folks, by the way, for, for attending tonight and providing us with that background information, it was most helpful. And Kathy, thanks for all the work you've done on it as well.
Thank you. We appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us back to the town administrator's report. And I think we're at G, are we not? To devote on the parking?
Yes, I think these last two items would be relatively quick, so we could probably go on those. Yes, a tab 7G. You have the vote on the traffic ordinance. Yes, a tab 7G. You have the vote on the traffic ordinance. This was the parking prohibited on the south side of Mountain Base Road. It was originally advertised as, um, from Railroad Ave to McFarland Road on the south side, um, on Canoonic Lake, um, as was brought up by, uh, one of the residents, I believe David Pierce called in the first public hearing. You do have an amended ordinance in your packet that would take it from, um, McFarland Road to Bressard Ave. That is clearly defined there and also before the, what is used for the beach parking.
Okay, thank you. Yes. I remember talking about this change. It seems like a fairly simple and straightforward change. Is there any questions from board members relative to this? And we need a, we need a motion.
I'll make the motion. We vote on the traffic ordinance, uh, for parking prohibited on the south side of Mountain Base Road. It was from Railroad Ave to McFarland. Is that correct?
Uh, Bressard, Bressard Ave to McFarland.
Bressard to McFarland. Ordinance, uh, that would be, um, set.
Yeah, the rest, the rest of the motion is, uh, in the packet.
I'll second that.
Okay. The, the rest of the, uh, the rest of the proposed motion was to direct DPW to install signage sufficient to communicate to the public the parking restrictions on Mountain Base Road. So that, that's the full motion that has been recommended to us. Is that the motion you want to bring forward? Who was it? Was it Peter or Mark?
Yep, you're all set.
Okay, we got. So does everybody understand what we're voting on? Okay, and I'll call a roll. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Thank you. The motion passes 5-0-0. And finally, 7H is a, a, a relative system grant paperwork.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's actually two items in here. Um, but, uh, this is really to grant authorized signers on both of the documents. The first would be to designate, uh, Chief Brian Allard as the authorized official for any and all items related to the EMS Warm Zone Grant, and that was accepted on August 31st. And then the second was to designate, um, the Assistant Town Administrator/Finance Director Danielle Basora as authorized official for signing any and all items related to the Gopher Municipal Fund Grants that was accepted on May 18th, 2020 and August 10th, 2020.
Make a motion to designate Chief Brian Allard as the authorized official for any and all items related to the EMS Warm Zone Grant application that we accepted on 8/31/2020.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion by Peter and a second by Chet. Discussion on the motion? We'll take a vote on that before we take up the other, um, the other motions. We'll take them separately. Uh, I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
Yes. That motion passes 5-0-0. Now we need a second motion.
Washington designated Assistant Town Administrator/Finance Director Danielle Basora as the authorized official for signing any and all items related to the Gopher Grant, which we accepted on, on 5/18/2020 and 8/10/2020.
Thank you, Peter. Motion by Peter with a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Kelly. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call a roll. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chet?
Yes.
That motion passes, uh, 5-0-0. Let's see, that brings us up to...
Six. I think we'd backtrack to the DPW director on six.
Thank you. Okay. Your item number 6A, uh, some CIP vehicle bid award. Vehicle sale. So that's tab six.
Hi, good evening.
Hey, Adam.
So, uh, yes, we've got some, uh, bid results from a bid opening on September 9th, 1:00 PM. Uh, we had advertised for the replacement of our Skidsteer loader, which is used in the recycling building, and then they, they find a second life after that with a highway cruise, a yard horse tractor, which is used, uh, in the transfer station itself to talk to trailers around, and a service body pickup. The bids we received, uh, are as, as you see in your packet. Did receive multiple bids on everything except the, uh, service body upset itself for the pickup truck. Um, I, I would like to call out, uh, one typo I've got in the, uh, bid tab that I assigned there, uh, under the six-wheel yard tractor section. Uh, you'll see two bids by Patsy's Bus Sales. Uh, vehicle one was, uh, not $400,000, it was $40,000 and five. Uh, so we received, uh, three bids, but technically Seabrook Truck Center also had two vehicles, but it was the same price for each of them. Uh, so, uh, for, if you want to have me run right down the, the list here for, for the, uh, Skidsteer loader, uh, it's a couple thousand dollars more, but we are recommending awarding to Bobcat in New Hampshire rather than the low bidder Borregard equipment, uh, because Borregard's, uh, vehicle is a case Skidsteer and the implements, uh, interchangeability of the implements is a little bit complicated because of Bobcat's smart implements that they have, which, um, has a feedback loop with the machine's hydraulics. So, uh, to get another vendor's implements to work with Bobcat or vice versa, you need some, uh, some wiring harnesses and, uh, uh, potentially some adapters for each implement. And it just, over the course of a 15 to 18-year life of a, a vehicle, if we hold it that long again, it's pretty difficult to keep those harnesses in good working shape, but also, um, you know, to have to worry each time about swapping, uh, implements. I think it's gonna pay for itself. The, uh, the yard tractor bid, we would like to recommend awarding to the low bidder Seabrook Truck Center. Uh, it's a 2014 auto car. The, uh, Patsy's Bus Sale, uh, vehicle one is a 2012 with higher hours and the vehicle two is a 2018 model, and we just felt that was outside of our budget. The one-ton pickup, uh, we'd like to recommend awarding to Graponi Ford is the low bidder. And the service body with the sole bid, we did ask for an option if we just had a cash and carry price for our mechanics to install, but, um, based on, you know, all that they're faced with, uh, I think it's money well spent to have a, have the upfitter, a professional upfitter, put those, uh, that body on for an additional couple thousand dollars. So, um, as you see there, uh, with, with the implements as bid, um, all the vehicles save the Skidsteer loader come in under CIP budget. The Skidsteer is a couple thousand dollars over what we had budgeted. Uh, we have, uh, as you authorized at the last meeting, we have submitted a grant request from New Hampshire, the Beautiful. We had anticipated $5,000 based on previous purchases, so we're hoping to get that 5,000 again, which would bring that, uh, that net price down below CIP. But, um, as you may remember from a month or so ago, we did, uh, come in underbid, underestimate, I should say, on both the six-wheel dump truck and outfit, as well as the one-ton dump truck and outfit. So we've got a couple thousand in the CIP line saved on those, uh, that, um, could, could, um, work towards the small overage on the Bobcat. But the other three are under our CIP amounts, um, as, as presented for award.
I have a question when you get ready.
Yes, sir.
Uh, on the, on the Bobcat, it says recommended motion, and it says, um, traded include a 2007 Bobcat S185. What does that mean?
Uh, the Bobcat model is an S185. So the, uh, that is the vehicle that's being replaced. We did include a, a trade-in allowance, uh, form, or blank, I should say, on the, on the bid forms for the vendors and, and they did bid, uh, $6,500 for, uh, for trade-in allowance on that.
So the actual price of the new Skidsteer is 48,539 plus 6,500?
Uh, so 48,539, uh, yes, includes the, includes the trade-in allowance. Does not include a 5,000, uh, grant that's anticipated.
So that actually we're talking a more like, you know, a little, uh, 55,000 or 54,000 dollars. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, with, with the three implements as listed on, uh, that next page on, on the packet. Eight-inch bucket, a 60-inch snow blower and a grapple bucket.
And that wasn't, those things were included in the CIP request?
Uh, CIP, I think we had listed, we just said implements. I don't believe we, we identified, um, you know, those particular three. I think we said, uh, you know, applicable or something like that. I'd have to pull up the CIP worksheet, but it did include implements. I just, I'm pretty sure we didn't call out those three specifically.
So you're about $9,000 over CIP request or 8,000?
Uh, so CIP, we, we gross budget. It's on a gross basis, so we have to budget as if there is no trade-in whatsoever. So we budget $45,000 and then we also budgeted $5,000 in anticipated revenue. So right now we're $3,539 over CIP. If we were able, you know, that's, that's so if, uh, you know, it comes time to trade in the Bobcat, it catches on fire and there's no insurance or something on it and there's no value to it, uh, we have to gross basis, so you don't have to, I think, spend more money that year for that equipment. But, um, any, any trade-in revenue above and beyond the CIP price, or I'm sorry, above and beyond, um, the $5,000 grant would have normally been, you know, credited to, um, anticipated revenue.
Exactly. Normally it would be anticipated, the, the sale of the old one would be, uh, credited to anticipated revenue, but that's not what you're doing. You're actually using the funds from that trade-in to purchase over and above the CIP cost that you projected.
I guess, you know, we, we don't budget for the trade-in. So, so the only thing that we budget, when we, when we budgeted for 2020 was for the grant. We didn't, but we don't budget for trade-in allowances.
But you're spending the traded allowance is what I'm saying.
If, if the board chooses, chooses to, uh, you know, go with the recommendation and get a couple extra implements, then, then yes.
I have a problem with that. When we budget an, an item, um, for CIP and CIP for a certain dollar amount, and then all of a sudden we're taking a trade-in and purchasing other items with it, when normally or in the past, we've taken those funds from that item that we're selling or trading in and putting them into the unreserved fund. So that's kind of a, that's kind of a, a change from the norm of what we've been doing. And I'm not sure if I agree with that or, you know, I think the board needs to take an idea or come up with a, take a stand or, or come up with a policy on how we handle this, because normally we wouldn't do that.
I have to go back.
A lot of cases, we just sell it outright and take those funds and put it into the unreserved fund balance.
Sometimes we do. I'd have to go back and look. I know for sure this is not the first trade-in. I think we just traded in, uh, one of the, the six-wheel dump truck, the, the award that you gave, included the trade-in, the old one. The, you know, that what the voters, uh, voted on was $45,000 towards purchase of a Bobcat and related equipment and $5,000 expected revenue. Um, so, you know, from a, from the voter perspective, uh, what we're spending is 30, uh, 3,500 over what they had seen.
Or what the budget committee was told, right? I mean, you, the voters, the voters probably don't look at it that closely. It's more the budget committee that we, we use the expenditures and I, I just, I don't think it's a good precedent to do it that way, but that's from the board on the side, not just me.
Now, how about other board members? Do you have some, some feedback? Do you want to provide an input onto this specific issue that Peter's raised?
Mr. Kirk?
Yes, Kelly.
Danielle had a comment, I think.
Yes.
Okay, Danielle, go ahead, please.
Good evening, everyone. Um, just to explain how a trade-in would be handled on the accounting side, what we would do is, as Peter said, fully expend the, the item that we're purchasing as it is a gross appropriation, and then we would take a negative, um, revenue against that invoice so that the net check going to the vendor is the net amount of the bid, but you do still receive that revenue into the revenue line that you would normally, as if you sold the item separately.
So it does show a revenue?
It'll show a revenue and it'll show the full expenditure of the price. So if, if the total purchase price is above what was budgeted, that would have to be approved as part of the motion.
Kelly, did I hear, do you, you wanted to say something?
No, I just wanted to give Danielle an opportunity to speak.
Okay. Um, Peter, does that, how does that?
Danielle just explained to you that we're now taking the, we're actually taking the, uh, the funds from the traded and buying other stuff with it, where that wasn't the way that there was approached to the budget committee. Budget committee was told that the, it was gonna be, it was gonna, the budgeting for 45,000. We were lucky enough, hopefully, to get a $5,000 grant, which helps offset some of it, but we still using some of the traded money to purchase other equipment. And that's not the way it was presented to the budget committee. That's, that's my concern. I mean, do I disagree with, disagree with using it to do, to buy that stuff? No. What I'm disagreeing is the manner in which we approach it as far as not, uh, as far as taking traded and buying something else.
Yeah, I understand. You're concerned with the process. Go ahead, Adam.
Exactly. It's process.
Go ahead, Adam.
Well, um, a couple notes. Worksheet that we have presented to both the AP and Budget Committee. Uh, we did list that, uh, replacing a 2007 Bobcat Steer, post-purchase of a new Bobcat with interchangeable attachments as needed for operations. And then the estimated cost was $45,000, disposal plan, trade-in or auction. The other savings that I mentioned earlier on the six-wheel and the one-ton, which will be, um, you know, unspent unless, uh, something crazy happens and you want to move this money to another line. It's about 31,000 so far between those two bids. I think just over 20 was the trade-in, so another, we're 11,000 under on those two vehicles without the trade-in. So to be a little bit over here, but a, but a lot under on the other side, I personally didn't see a problem with it.
Adam, what were the three additional pieces we were gonna buy? The blower, the bucket and what?
Uh, we're looking at a, a bucket, a blower and a gra- a grapple. And the grapple comes in handy both, uh, you know, for the larger items that come into the transfer station and then,
Yeah.
you know, later on in its life, um, if it's out on the roads, you know, trees or whatever else on the roadside.
I just don't understand the fact that we're buying this vehicle and they don't provide it with a bucket. That's, that's the hard part for me. I, I understand the blower, grapple. Those are additional things that we, um, we should purchase, but the hard part I have to swallow is the fact that we're buying this vehicle without a bucket. Is that, is that the way I understand it?
That's the way they come now, Mark.
Okay, I, and I didn't know that, Peter. I had to ask the question. That's all.
Basic machine and then you buy the individual implements?
Yeah.
To accompany the machine.
Do we have, do we have a grapple currently on the Skidsteer that's there or the one that we're replacing?
The S185?
Yes.
We do have, uh, we do have a grapple. I don't know the age. I'd have to take that for homework if we wanna figure out if it's time for that to, you know?
Yeah, okay.
Go down the road with the machine. We have three Bobcats, one, one transfer station and two on the roads.
Yep. I'm all set for questions, Carlos.
Okay, anybody else? So I think I'm hearing consensus. There's a need for these, this, this machine and the implements, the issues with the process that Peter has raised. So I need a motion, uh, which way we're gonna go with this? Don't everybody jump all at once.
I'll make the motion that we approve it, but I just, my, my objection is not an objection to the motion. My objection is to the process.
Yeah.
I really think we need to look at that and say, when we approach the budget committee, we give them the full story and, you know, either we, we're gonna use the trade-in towards other stuff or not. But I'll make a motion that, uh, we award the bid to the Skidsteers and Bobcat of New Hampshire for 48,539 as presented to include the trade-in, 2000 Bobcat S185.
Okay. Thank you, Peter, and a second by Chet, I believe.
Yeah.
I heard. Okay, does everybody understand the motion?
Yep.
I'm gonna call a roll. Okay, I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chet?
Yes.
And that motion passes 5-0-0. Thank you. Next. Adam, we have a recommended motion. This is for the, um, yard tractor.
Recommend we award the bid for the yard tractor to the low bidder Seabrook Truck Center for $39,534, 2014 Auto Car Exporter.
Thank you, Peter.
Second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion on the motion? During that, I'll call a roll. The vote, yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter? Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes. Yes, sir.
And Chat?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes 500. And now finally, a, a motion, um, to upfit the sole bidder Hughes Company.
Motion again, award the bid for the service body up, up bit to the sole bidder of Hughes Company for $13,995. But did we skip the Ford bid?
Yeah.
Sorry. All right. Let's take the one we just had the motion on and we'll back up on the other one on the Ford.
I'll second that.
They had a motion by Peter and a second by, was it Chat?
Yep.
Okay. This is, again, this is for the upfit. Uh, motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Do you know, I'll call a roll. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chat?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, that motion passes 500. Now we'll back up, I'm sorry, to the one we skipped over. This is for Ford.
Recommendation toward the bid for the single rear wheel package to the low bidder Groupon Ford for $30,000, uh, $30,567 to include trade in of a 2007 Ford F-350 and 84 month warranty.
Thank you, Mark. Second? Second, was that Peter?
Yeah.
Second by Peter. Any discussion on the motion? I'll call the roll. The vote, yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Uh, Mark?
Yes, sir.
And Chat?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes 500.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andy.
So on the, on the next page, uh, page eight, I think, of your packets, I've got a, uh, corresponding vehicle sales for the year.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry, just before we start at 6:59, don't we have a public hearing at seven?
6:59. Thank you for keeping an eye on the clock for me, Kelly. I appreciate that.
All right, Adam, I just don't want to have to cut you off.
That's all right. I appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah, we'll, we'll come back to you, uh, Adam, to finish up. Okay, let's see. So we're at tab number eight. Okay, Derek, can you give us the background on this, please? Can I open the public hearing? Derek?
Sorry, I was muted. Um, about a year ago, the Select Board started looking at, um, some improvements at the Wallace Road Roundabout on Mass Road. Um, the town, working with Southern New Hampshire Planning Commission, had a, uh, cert, had an engineer to come in and do a traffic analysis of that. They presented to you on April 24th, uh, their memo with recommendations for recommended short-term improvements and long-term improvements. Uh, if there's anybody watching the meeting or listening to the meeting, that report is, uh, on the town website. It is included with the Select Board minutes of, uh, April 24th. And, uh, there has been some discussion, uh, with the board after that. And I think at your meeting on, I guess, 24th, the board made a decision to move forward with a proposed ordinance to, uh, install a stop sign on Wallace Road, uh, at the entrance to the Mass Road Roundabout. So that is the purpose of, of the public hearing this evening is to receive input from the public on, uh, specifically that, whether or not to install a stop sign at that intersection.
Okay. Thank you, Derek. So in compliance with RSA 41:14-B, the Select Board is conducting this first of two public hearings to accept public input on the proposed ordinance entitled Stop Sign on Wallace Road at the Mass Road Roundabout. Result of this ordinance, if enacted, would place a stop sign on Wallace Road at the Mass Road Roundabout. And I'll also point out that the second public hearing on this matter is scheduled for Monday, September 28th, at 7:00 PM. So with that background, I'm going to open the public hearing and accept public comment on this. Derek, do we have anybody there for public comment?
Yes, we do have people on the telephone. If you are on the telephone and you wish to be heard during this public hearing, please press star nine on your telephone. When your line is unmuted, uh, you will be asked to give your name, uh, your place of residence and then, uh, your comment to the board. So I will unmute the first caller.
Okay. And who is the first caller? And good evening.
Hi, this is Patrick O'Brien, 73 Church Street, 104. I've lived in that area and lived and driven that, uh, road every day. And if we put a stop sign in, we're just going back in time. We're just, it, it wouldn't help anything, unfortunately. And I do think that we need to find an alternative plan that would make stop signs look 10 times better. But the way that it was constructed as is, is not the way that it should have been. It was a poor design as is. And putting a stop sign in would not help. I don't know if putting signs at, at each intersection for 50 miles an hour with orange flashing lights might help. But putting a stop sign unfortunately is not the right answer.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Anything you actually want to ask before we go on to the next caller? Thank you. Appreciate you for participating. Who do we have next that would like to provide input?
Again, uh, if you are interested in, uh, speaking with the board, if you could press star nine, uh, when I unmute your line, if you could identify yourself and, uh, your place of residence.
Good evening. Who do we have with us?
Go, go ahead, Kathy.
83 New Boston Road. Um, I'm with my mom, Margaret Hoplin. Um, I'm against the stop sign at the end of Wallace. I agree with the previous caller. You know, before there was a stop sign, um, and it was a hassle, nobody could get out of Wallace Road. Um, you know, I think unfortunately, we understand that that circle just is too small for that area and there's too short between Wallace and the westbound bracket on Mass Road. And, and a stop, is there a stop sign at all three entrances? The circular needed or no stop sign and just maybe slowing the speed down. People on Mass Road feel like they have to ride away already. And, uh, adding a stop sign is just going to do the same thing and bring us backwards in time.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Uh, is there another caller who would like to be heard on this, this matter this evening?
Yes, there is. I will unmute their line now.
Hi, this is Deb Dunham. Uh, we live on Page Hill Road. I also agree that putting a stop sign there just totally defeats the purpose, purpose of the rotary. I think either, as the previous caller said, you do three stop signs or you have the rotary.
Okay. Thank you for your input. Appreciate that. Um, next caller.
Again, when I unmute your line, if you could identify yourself and your place of residence, please.
Hi, caller.
Hello, this is Boris Demers. I live on 11 Tannager Road. I agree with all the previous callers. The rotary has been a godsend for anyone coming down Wallace Road. I think, uh, what we need to do is somehow slow the traffic down. And, uh, really, uh, we would be going back in time. Stop signs would not change anything. It would just make matters worse and the, uh, the guys that are going on Mass Road will assume that they have to ride away and just not you. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you for joining us and providing your comments. Uh, who's next on, on the caller line, Derek?
We do have quite a few callers. Uh, callers, if you wish to speak during this public hearing, if you can press star nine on your telephone, uh, it'll be able to identify you, all right? Uh, and when I unmute your line, if you could identify, uh, your name and your place of residence, please.
Hello, caller.
Hi, this is Jason Cody. I live at 18 Merrill Road. I'm not in favor of having a stop sign there either. Coming down Wesley Hill is a complete nightmare, uh, so having traffic stop at Wallace Road trying to enter the rotary would make leaving my, my area almost impossible in the morning.
Okay.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you for, uh, providing comments. Appreciate it. Uh, who's next on the, uh, caller list?
Great. I'll unmute another line. Hello, caller. If you could identify yourself and your place of residence.
Hey, good evening, caller.
Uh, the phone is, that is ending in 2906. Uh, you are, you should be unmuted.
Sorry about that. I live on First Ave. I, uh, have a degree in civil engineering, although my first piece is not traffic engineering, but I know a little bit about roundabouts. I disagree with the stop sign proposal, although I have not read the packet yet from the consultants. I would recommend asking the consultants to come up with a better method of traffic calming and a, uh, better public information. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Appreciate it. Who's next?
Caller, if you could identify yourself and your place of residence, please.
Hello, good evening.
For a phone number ending in 3436.
Hi, caller.
Yeah, this is Al Wett. I live on 29 Laurel Street.
Go ahead.
Yep.
I don't agree with the stop sign either. I mean, that's, we started with the stop sign, now we're going back to the stop sign. It's not working. I think we spent enough time and money on trying to fix this problem. With today's technology, we should be able to put a set of traffic lights up there that site that works during the peak hours and flashing yellow and red during the, the, the rest of the time. Like I said, this is just, this, this problem is just going to keep going on and on and you guys are still going to keep spending more time and money and it's not going to get better.
Okay. Thank you for, for your comments. Uh, another caller, Derek.
Uh, we do have some callers. Again, if you wish to speak, if you could press star nine on your telephone, we will know that you are, uh, raising your hand to speak.
Hi, who do we have with us? Like to speak?
Uh, one more time, I'll just say, uh, we do have a few callers on the line. Um, some have spoken already. But if you wish to speak, uh, before the public hearing is closed, if you could press star nine on your telephone, that will identify you wish to speak.
Who do we have with us? Now's your opportunity to comment. Good evening.
I would just say one last time, if any, um, anyone who has called in, if you would wish to speak during this public hearing, if you could press star nine now, uh, that will raise your hand and, uh, will allow you to speak.
So you're not seeing anyone else, Derek, at this point?
There are people on the line, but they are not raising their hand wishing to speak at this time.
So folks, if you want to speak, now is your opportunity. You have to press star nine so that we know you want to speak and that way we can open it up for you. Is there someone who would like to speak? Now's your opportunity.
Okay, we do have one caller. Hold on a second.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, caller. If you could, uh, identify yourself and your place of residence.
Yes, hi, this is Maurice Blando. I live at 81 Church Street in Goffstown.
Hi. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you. Thank you for, uh, taking my call. Um, I'm just, I'm just curious, has there been any studies, uh, of how to improve this? Uh, I'm, I'm sure this, this same, um, problem has been caught in other communities and I'm wondering if there's been any solutions that have been brought to the table and show what they were.
Yes, there have been significant studies done on this. Um, Derek, could you just point the caller to somewhere on the website where he can access the study?
Uh, right now, uh, again, the VHB, a local engineering firm, did do a traffic analysis earlier this year for the town. That is available on our town website, uh, along with the Select Board minutes. So if you go into the Select Board minutes on, uh, the meeting of April, uh, 27th, I believe it is there. Uh, after the conclusion of this meeting, we will put a link to that study on the homepage and we'll also link to it from Facebook so that, uh, people can find it easy and easier and see the short-term and long-term improvements that were recommended by the engineering firm.
So I'm getting some feedback. I can't hear the caller.
I'm sorry. I, I think it would be important to have a few solutions presented, um, to educate the publics that we may have better input as to what we think should, would happen, uh, going forward. From what I'm reading and, and perhaps not reading the whole story, but it, it looks kind of like we're regressing a little bit to what we had and, uh, in, in hoping that that's a solution. And I, I don't believe that the, the public is on board with that. So it, so I, I think that we need to, uh, for sure, have some, some multitude of different solutions and being able to, uh, chime in, uh, with an education and with, with some, with some, uh, uh, knowledge as to what we think is best.
So again, Derek pointed out, VHP did, VHB did do a study and it is up on our website that you can take a look at it and maybe familiarize yourselves a little bit more with some of the alternatives that are presented in that, in that study. Uh, and that, and again, we have a second public hearing coming up on September 28th, so we've got some time, caller, between now and then, so you can go and look at that and maybe join us for the, uh, second public hearing on the 28th of September, uh, after you've had an opportunity to review that report and maybe you can provide some specific comments at that time. Does that make sense?
It does. Can I ask one more question?
Sure you can.
Okay. Is there a, a specific event that brought apart, uh, uh, you know, about this whole study? I mean, was it, is it more than just congestion or is there safety concerns that are, that are being raised? I know that, you know, there, there's been a lot of, uh, people that had a hard time getting used to the whole rotary idea. But has, has it raised specific, uh, concerns as far as, you know, public safety?
Yeah. So you'll find the VHB discusses all, those issues and more, uh, in their, in their study and in their analysis. So they do look at all of those things, study, safety, efficiency, uh, traffic control, uh, alternatives. A lot, a lot of information is in that study. And I think if you take some time to familiarize yourself with the study, perhaps maybe during that second public hearing on the 28th, you can pre, come, come back with some specific comments for us.
All right. Okay. Well, meanwhile, I appreciate you taking the time to hear my, my concerns and, uh, thank you very much.
You're welcome. We appreciate you, uh, participating. Derek, bye now. Derek, is there another caller on?
Uh, yes, we do have other callers on. Again, uh, callers, if you, uh, would like to be heard during this public hearing, please press star nine on your telephone. That will, uh, raise your hand so that we know that you'd like to speak. All right. And, uh, when I unmute your line, if you could just, uh, identify, give us your name and, um, tell us where your residence in, residences, and then you can give your public comment.
So good evening, caller. Who do we have with us? Hello, caller. Now's your opportunity. Derek, can you identify the caller, at least the four, last four numbers of the phone?
Go ahead. Go ahead. We can hear you. If you could just identify yourself, please.
Yep. My name is, uh, Phil Porkowski. I'm at 21 Smith Road. I, I definitely agree with everybody so far in their comments. There's no, there's no sense repeating that. But, uh, I do kind of, uh, want to ask the board to consider, you know, kind of abided by the Uniform Traffic Control Devices Regulation, uh, put out by the U.S. Department of Federal Highway Administration. Uh, specifically, I remember, um, here on Smith Road, when we, we had some concern about a stop sign that was removed and voted. that was removed and voted for removal by the board. This was reviewed by the DPW Director that stop signs should not be used for speed control and there was a challenge to try and find another intersection similar to the intersection of Smith Road and Ben Circle, you know, where a stop sign would be would be put in three different directions. I think the same rule applies here for a stop sign at any rotary. It's not, that would not be considered conventional to have a stop sign entering a rotary and if the means for doing so is for speed control, there's definitely other mechanisms and means for doing so. So I do think that same standard should be utilized here in this discussion.
Okay, thank you for participating. Appreciate that. Derek, next caller?
Yes, hold on just a second, Mr. Chair. All right. There we go. Caller, if you could identify yourself and your place of residence, please?
Good evening caller.
For the phone ending in number 2543.
Hi caller, how's your opportunity to provide comment? Who do we have with us?
This was Phil Porkowski, 21 Smith Road. I just spoke.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Thank you.
Caller ending in 2826, if you could identify yourself and your place of residence, please?
Yes, this is Joe McCarthy at Mountain Base Road. I too agree with all of the rest of the callers. I don't think the stop sign at the end of Wallace, sorry, at the end of Wallace Road is the solution. I think that, or my opinion, the main problem is the fact that you have almost straight lines of traffic still going through on Mass Road because people will come, you know, either direction and drive over the cobblestones as a means of getting through rather than following or slowing down and following the circle. I think you need some way or some means of slowing the traffic entering from those two spots. I think that putting a stop sign is only going to make it worse for anybody trying to pull out into the circle from Wallace Road, in my opinion.
Okay, so I can summarize. So you don't support the concept?
I do not support the concept. I do, I would support some further looking into traffic slowing of Mass Road itself to ease the, you know, to ease the traffic coming in from Wallace Road, but putting a stop sign, I am not in favor of.
Okay, thank you for your input. Next, Derek?
Just remind callers, if you could press star nine and if you've already pressed star nine and if you could hit it one more time, I think I cleared one alert. So if you could press star nine, if you would like to speak, we want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak during this public hearing. And I'll unmute the caller. Go ahead.
Good evening. Who do we have with us? I'm sorry, who do we have with us?
Hi, Steve Johnson from Rainbow Drive.
Hi, how are you?
Good, good. I think education of how to enter and exit a roundabout would probably solve a lot of that. People don't seem to give proper spacing in the roundabout and if you have people following closely, it doesn't give a chance for anyone to enter, enter into the roundabout, which causes even more traffic. So I think education would be the thing to do.
Thank you. Derek, do you recall seeing something up on our website relative to, you know, how to utilize roundabouts properly?
If we did have education relative to roundabouts, it may not have been prominent on the website in many years. It is something if the board chose to, we could revive that and bring that back out and give it a little bit more prominence.
Okay. Mr. Johnson, you want to add anything else while you have the floor?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for participating. Next caller, Derek?
Again, if anyone wishes to speak at this time, please press star nine on your phone. And again, this will be your last chance to comment at this public hearing. There is a second public hearing scheduled for Monday, September 28th at 7:00 PM. Again, if you wish to be heard at this public hearing, if you could press star nine at this time on your phone. Mr. Chair, I'm not seeing any other calls wishing, callers wishing to speak at this time.
Okay, let me just ask one more time, then I just want to make sure that everyone who wishes the opportunity to be heard has been heard. So if you'd like to be heard during this public comment period, now is your opportunity because I'm about to close the public hearing for tonight. So I give you one last caller. Is there anyone else out there who would like to be heard on this before we close the public hearing? Anyone, Derek?
No.
Okay, everyone that wishes to be heard has been heard, so I'm not at this point going to close the public hearing. And I once again remind people that a second public hearing on this issue is scheduled for September 28th, 2020. And that is at 7:00 PM as well, I believe. Correct, Eric?
Yes, it is. It is at 7:00 PM that night.
Okay, great. So the public hearing's closed. Let's see, so we'll go back to our agenda. And we're now at department updates. Nine in your packet. Let's see. I saw one update, I think, from the library. Is that right, Kelly?
Yes, that's correct. Diane provided an update for everyone because she wasn't going to be here this evening. Do you want me to just quickly go through it, Colas?
Sure, just a high point. Sure, that'd be great. Thanks, Kelly.
Okay, so the Boston Public Library recently expanded their foyer browsing, so you can go in and look at a small compilation of materials if you're interested in browsing. A face covering is required to look through those books. The parking lot pickup is continuing, so they've been taking online reservations or you can call and talk to a librarian. They can recommend or pull materials for you and they'll bring them outside for you to pick up. They're still doing computer reservations for any member of the public who needs computer access, internet access, and you can call and reserve a time to reserve the computers and the librarians and library staff will assist you in that. And finally, staff's available Monday, Thursday, and Friday from 9:00 to 5:00 and Tuesday and Wednesday from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM and then Saturdays from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So they are getting back closer to their previously regularly scheduled hours.
Thank you, Kelly. EOC and Fire Chief Howard, do you have a department update you'd like to present?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. So from the EOC, we continue to monitor our local and national information with regards to COVID-19. In town, our cases remain at the 1 to 4 range and statewide, I think we just approached over 7,700 cases from the fire department side. And I just really wanted to thank the entire community for the ongoing support that we received over the last couple of weeks as we continue to mourn the loss of St. Clair. So thank you everyone for that. And on a positive note, we want to congratulate and thank Mark Lemay for his 41 years of service to the Goss Town Fire Department. So thank you, Mark, for all you did for us.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mark. Many good years of service. Thank you, Mark.
And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Chief. And I saw the, we got, received tremendous support from surrounding communities near and far during the tough times, and so that was, that was nice to see and should be noted here tonight. Thank you, Chief. And the police, Chief Zerino.
Everyone, I just, so far, the police department is doing well personnel wise. We're just trying to fill these last couple of vacancies, as you heard in your report there. We lost another officer this week. Other than that, we're moving, we're moving forward, doing pretty well health wise. I would like to just kind of give a quick shout out to our three police cruisers that got some social media praise this weekend. Those three cruisers are actually waiting to be sent down to our outfitters in Nashua. They're behind about a month, but I guess they got some limelight on social media this weekend. But other than that, PD is doing pretty well and we're just looking forward to filling those vacancies.
Thank you, Chief. DPW Director Jacobs, you want to provide a department update? I know you'd spoken on other issues earlier, but how about a general update for the department?
Yes, sir, and I do have the vehicle disposition recommendation for you too at the end if I forget. So since we last spoke, the focus was on East Union Street to get that little surprise project wrapped up before the school buses start rolling in force. We got pretty close, but didn't quite make it for a first day of school to get the last of the curbing paved in, but sidewalks and the curb lines themselves were base paved last week as well as driveways and then on track to be back in to top the driveways at a later date. We don't have that scheduled yet, but we also were able to get plenty of mill and fill, pothole repair type work orders all around town, done some tree work, but ready to flip over to Shirley Hill Road, probably with two crews starting this week to get that project back on track after that little detour with East Union. Other things that came up, we also provided assistance with a course of services and then town elections last week and then the trees, I don't see Rick online, so I'll steal his thunder here. The buffer trees were planted last week between the athletic fields and the DPW. They look pretty good, so hopefully they are truly deer resistant and in a couple of years, they'll be a nice buffer. So that's all I've got for the update and then if you'd like, I can roll right into the vehicle dispositions.
Yeah, go ahead and do that. That'd be great.
Okay, so right now, we've got with the vote tonight on the yard horse tractor, we've got five vehicles for sale. The Crown Victorias that are, you know, these trickle down from the police department, usually to DPW, Parks and Rec, or Town Hall. So I think these two replace the 2019 CIP replacements from PD, a 2011 Ford Crown Victoria, which was last operated by the Parks and Rec Department, a 2009 Crown Victoria operated by DPW with no reverse gear, 2008 Ford Expedition from the fire department as they replaced that vehicle last year. Unexpected, due to rocker panel rusted out at the moment. As we talked about earlier, the 1986 Yark tractor, we didn't receive a good trade-in land for, so we'd like to sell that. And a 2009 GMC ambulance, which would make probably a good camp life setup for somebody in its next life outside of public service. So with your permission, I'd like to recommend placing those five pieces of equipment advertised for sale locally and we probably will have, well, I know we'll have at least one more when the one ton truck arrives that will be going out to sale.
Okay, questions for Adam?
Peter, you're muted.
I'll make the motion now. We put the vehicles up for sale.
Second. Second and final check. Any discussion on the motion? See, now I'll call a roll. You vote yes, Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And check.
Yes.
Motion passes by.
Thank you, and one note, maybe just a style point. Would you prefer to see this again post bids being received or would you like to give the chair permission to sign it to the highest bidder, whatever that may be?
I'm perfectly comfortable with authorizing you to sign with the highest bidder.
Wait, I think we're authorizing the chair, correct?
Yes.
So I'll make the motion that we authorize the chair.
Yeah, I was going to say, the chair's job to do that.
Yep.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Motion by Chad, second by Peter. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And check.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks again, all.
Thanks, Adam. Okay, under new business, before we get to the old business, which is the Scotty Quard River pedestrian bridge ad hoc committee. Eric had asked me earlier today if we wanted to change the meeting format now that the governor has issued further directives as to size of meetings, the number of attendees that can attend the meetings and do we want to continue with virtual meetings or do we want to go to in-person meetings with proper social distancing and protective, personal protective equipment as necessary? So that's the issue. I wanted to throw that out there, get a feel for the board as to which direction you want to go. Anybody want to start the discussion?
I'll start the discussion, Colas.
Yeah.
Would it be necessary for us to wear masks if we go, if we have the meetings?
Derek, what's the governor's opinion saying?
Well, I think the CDC guidelines is if you can maintain proper social distancing, we may have to reconfigure the room so that only select board members are up at the front chairs going down to where Gail and I typically sit. If you put somebody at the far end there and basically you'd have two members on each side and the chair at the head of the table, you would be able to maintain that proper six-foot social distancing and under those conditions, I think you would be able to operate without a mask.
And then for other people who are in attendance, who would be required to wear masks? Is that, is that the?
The only, the only way they would be required to wear masks is if the select board took a vote to require people to wear a mask.
Right.
Right now, we would, we do have signage up that encourages it. We have masks available and we can continue moving that way, but if for some reason you wanted to, or your public meetings, if you're going to go that format, you would have the opportunity to do that. I would say you probably need to visit that for all public bodies and then, or just see if we can do it with social distancing and perhaps maintain that we have department heads continue to call in rather than to come and be onsite unless they have a presentation that they would feel that they need to be in the room for.
So I personally would like to get back to in-person meetings as soon as possible. I think it's important, I think, you know, I personally find I get a lot more out of a meeting when people are sitting around a table and we're looking at each other and we're conversing with each other. But I'd like to hear from other folks on the board. What are your thoughts?
I agree, Colas, with you. I'd rather go back to the meeting providing I don't have to wear a mask. If I have to wear a mask, I'm not interested in going in.
Okay.
Those are my words exactly, Colas. If we don't have to wear a mask, fine. If we have to wear a mask, I'm not really up to wear a mask for an hour or two. That's not my thing.
Well, I agree with Derek. I think as far as we board members go, we can easily socially distance in the meeting room. Then we just need to deal with the folks who are, you know, coming before us. Kelly, what do you think?
I'm open to either, if somewhat the majority is comfortable with. I have no issue wearing a mask in a meeting, however, prefer to be socially distanced. I'm also okay with Zoom meetings, so I'm with you with any of the options.
Chad, what do you think?
I think it's, I agree with you, Colas, that in-person meetings, you get a lot more out of it for sure. Just that's my personal preference. As long as we can do it safely and that we're putting nobody in danger, I'd be okay coming back together. I'd be curious what Chief Allen has to say as well and go from there, but if we can do it safely in person, that would be my preference.
Chief Allen, still, Chief Allen, you still with us? I think, I don't, oh wait a minute, yeah, Goss Town Fire is still here.
Oh, he is there.
I'm still here.
What do you think? What are your thoughts, Chief?
I think exactly what the town administrator said, as long as you can socially distance, reconfigure the room. If a department head has a presentation and they wish to be in person, otherwise still call in remotely. I think those are very good options.
Okay. So I'm getting consensus amongst the board members, that's the direction we want to head in. Any last comments before we move on? Because I think I'll give Derek some direction to go ahead and make that change and set that. Because I think I'll give Derek some direction to go ahead and make, make that change and set that up so that we can, you know, meet the CDC requirements and maintain social distancing within the select board room.
Do you want a motion, Colas, or we all set?
Yes, please, Mark. That'd be great.
I'll make a motion. We'll return back to the in-person meetings downstairs in room 106, starting our next meeting.
With proper social distancing and following CDC guidelines. Great. Someone a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Peter. Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Just one thing, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Derek, would, would we be able to offer PVE to the public should they wish to attend? So, so I understand that if we, if we want to require masks, we have to vote on it. But to highly encourage it, can we have it available for the meetings to hand out?
Yes, we do actually have those available now right outside the meeting room. We do have hand sanitizer. We do have a stand for masks, so we would offer that. And I think it would be wise to also continue the, the call in telephone. That way, if any residents wanted to call in and listen to the meeting, as they have been, they'll still have the option to watch on GTV. But there may be some that wish to call in. They could participate that way if they don't feel that the social distancing protocols are enough.
Okay, thank you. That's good. That's a good, that's a good question. That's still, that's still available. Okay, so motion and a second. And we had a little bit of the, any further discussion on the call roll? Okay, I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Thank you. Derek, just keep us all abreast of the changes you're making and when you roll it out, please.
I think we, I think we'll do it for the next meeting on the 28th, so please plan on coming to Town Hall. And I will send out any changes that we're doing to the room layout or anything like that.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just can I make a comment?
Sure, Kelly, please.
Knowing that we have the second public hearing, Derek, can we please try to repost for the roundabout, the second public hearing? Can we try to repost the call in information so that people can just do that instead of coming in?
Absolutely.
I want to avoid that for the first one.
You have a good thought.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay. Then we go into old business. We have membership appointments. This is for the Piscataquard River pedestrian bridge ad hoc committee. Tab 10 something.
10, just number 10.
10, 10. So you, in your packet, you see there, I think we received five applications for at-large member positions. People had opportunity to review those. I have.
At Colas?
Yep, go ahead.
So, you know, we have the proposal, the people's names in front of us. And it's asking us to pick a select board member. So I would like to make the motion that you be the select board member along with the people that are listed on this list for ad hoc committee members.
Yeah, that's fine, Peter. I was going to actually volunteer to serve as a select board rep. So if both are comfortable with that, I'd be happy to serve that role.
That was a motion. We come in a second.
I'll second.
Okay, that, the motion by Peter and a second by Kelly. Any discussion on the select board rep on the Piscataquard River pedestrian bridge ad hoc committee? Hearing on a call or roll, I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yeah.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And chat?
Yes.
Motion passes 500. Now as far as the at-large members, you see there, there's a table with five members.
Cause my most, my motion included that.
Oh, good. Okay, I missed that, Peter. So what?
Included appointing you and the members that were presented to us on this list is what?
Well, there are five presented. There's only four slots.
Well, we got everybody's name down here, so. Do you want to knock somebody off or just add somebody to it?
Well, I think if I may, Mr. Chair, I had recommended that if you were going to have all five, I think what I would ask you to do is appoint one as an alternate member. That would maintain the odd number on the, on the committee.
For votes?
Yep. For votes and for forum purposes, but an alternate can still fully participate and would have the opportunity should. And my recommendation would be to allow that at-large member to vote if another at-large member is absent.
Yep, that sounds reasonable. And I would suggest that the first four be the, the members. And then the alternate member be the last one, Eric Slason, based upon the applications I reviewed.
Okay, I'd make, I amend my motion then.
Okay, so Peter has amended the motion for the first four. And then the last one, Eric Slason, is an alternate to serve in the event there's, there's a vacancy by one of the others. Peter, Peter made the motion to a second.
I'll amend my second.
Thank you, Kelly. Any discussion on the motion? Everybody understand the motion? None, I'll call a roll. I vote yes. Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes, sir.
And chat?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, let's see, do we have anything else left under the public? If we have a non-public session, we need to go into.
Also, Mr. Chair, you do after that, there's not a, there's not a separate tab, but there is a discussion on the town seal.
All right, yes, of course. So that is in our packet as well. And there's been a number of seals, seals recommended. They're all in our packet. Different, different schemes, some light, some dark.
You have a question?
Yep, go ahead.
There's a motion here to use the high resolution, high resolution. Which one is that? The one with the clouds, it says? I'm not sure. Is that?
Nope, yes, deado. That was the HTC's recommendation.
Okay, but is that the one that's dark with the clouds or is that the one light with the clouds?
Peter, it's the one on the second page. You'll see remastered light and remastered no clouds. And then the other one is on the next page. Because of the contrast of the paper that we used, we decided to go with two seals. So it would aesthetically fit what we were going to do with the seals.
So if I understand what you're saying, we're going to use two different ones, both the top of the page ones on the second and third page.
Yes, that was, that was the objective in the discussion that came out of HTC was there are some applications where it is preferable to have that darker outer seal. Many times on the web design, we use that and we put a, make it opaque. So it is preferable to have that darker, darker outer colored seal. And then there's other applications where we would want the, the white outer ring. So that was the recommendation that came out of the HTC.
Where does the seal used?
We use it on town letterhead. I think originally about a year ago, this discussion got started because there were town employees using different seals on, as their email signature. So we use it on letterhead. We use it on memos. We use it on electronic for the webpage, Facebook, those kind of, those items.
So the two you're talking about are on the second page at the top one, which is remastered light?
Correct.
The third page, which is remastered dark?
Yes.
Those are the two we're considering? Okay, I have a couple of observations and comments. What I don't like about those is I don't like the wires in any of these, the transmission tower with the wires running through it. I don't know, I prefer, preferably rather not draw attention to those on our town seal. And my other observation is in both of those, I think the clouds are way overdone. I think there's way too many clouds, like a few clouds, fine, but I think, you know, as you look at the top of them, that one big billowy cloud and then off to the right. I just think there's too many clouds. I think if we could sort of reduce the number of clouds, I think it would clean it up and make it a little, little clearer and crisper. So just a couple of observations that I had. Anybody else comment on this? Nobody else wants to share their artistic eye?
How much of a problem is to change something like that, Colas? I don't know.
This, this was done by our in-house IT. We can make a change. What I'd like to do is ask the town clerk if she can stamp a heavy bonded paper and we can get that to you to show you what the physical stamp out of the town clerk's office looks like.
That's a good idea.
This, I, I do realize, you know, we had IT also the idea of removing the clouds altogether. But if you actually look at the documents that are stamped and under the possession of the town clerk, they do have clouds. So maybe if you see that, unfortunately, we can't, we'd have to 3D scanning to get an exact replica of what she has. But we can do that and then I can ask IT to make some slight modifications to see again if this is, this is a, supposed to be a digital representation of what the town clerk's seal looks like, whereas, but the town clerk's seal would remain the official seal for the town.
Yeah, I think if we have something before us, you know, an audio, a visual, it would help, help me a lot to see what it's actually going to look like on paper.
Yeah, we can make those adjustments and bring that back at the next meeting.
Okay. Appreciate that. Any other comments on the seal? Okay, I think that, does that conclude our public portion of the meeting? I believe it does.
Colas, I have one question.
I'm sorry, we still have the action matrix. Yep, go ahead, Kelly.
Did, did we, Derek, did we touch on the comments that were sent to us this afternoon? Writing the seal?
I, I know we have not touched on those as we'll talk about this at the next meeting. I did forward an email to all board members that came from resident David Pierce. If you'd like to review those and I can speak to David about his concerns between now and the next meeting.
Okay.
That'd be great, Derek. I did, I did see that. There was an awful lot that he put into that, into that email.
Very thorough.
So let's look at the action matrix. There's actually not a lot on the action matrix. Changes of personnel plan and communication strategy. Let's see. Working on a process for a department review and non-union input.
Oh, yes, I'll be talking to Vice Chair Boyer between now and the next meeting. You know, we did have that first presentation to you in August.
Yep.
But I think we have talked to department heads on how we can move forward with this. There are some items we would still like to bring to the board for approval. And then perhaps reviving the HR committee to go over those. But I would like to, an opportunity to talk with Vice Chair Boyer and then bring that to you at your meeting on the 28th.
Okay, fine. So we'll leave that on the, on the matrix. And then under grants? I don't see anything. I don't see anything for vehicles.
Yeah, we haven't listed any of the grants that have been accepted, those related to the COVID response that Danielle's been putting in.
Okay, so we'll pull those up on the matrix for the next meeting?
Yeah, we can put those up. It's just a summary of where everything is.
That'd be great. On vehicles or equipment? Don't see anything. All righty. That concludes the agenda for our public portion of the meeting, so I need a motion to go into non-public.
Make the motion. We go into non-public session RSA 91A, full and three, two, for B hiring and C, matter of which would adversely affect reputation.
Okay, I made a motion to go into non-public. Have a second? It was, it was by Mark, I think, I, you hear chat? Yep, second. I'll call the roll to go into non-public. I vote yes, Kelly?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And chat?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone who's been listening and participating in tonight's meeting. We're going, this concludes our public portion of the meeting. We're going to go into non-public session. Have a good evening. Stay safe and stay healthy.